Did you hear that? It was authority.
Heavy hand, doctor. Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome. It's 2:32, so I wanted to go ahead and get started. We'll start the way we always do with introductions. We'll start with our clerks, then we will go to our executive team members.
Good afternoon. I am Christine Smith, clerk to the board.
Good afternoon. I am Marla Lee Eason, deputy clerk to the board.
Good afternoon. I'm Susan Rodriguez McDowell. I'm elected by the people of District Six.
Good afternoon. I'm Laura Meyer, and I represent District Five.
Good afternoon. I am Mecklenburg County Commissioner Elaine Powell, representing North Mecklenburg, Huntersville, Davidson, Cornelius, and North Charlotte.
Good afternoon. I'm George Dunlap, elected by the people of District Three.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Mark Jarrell. I've been elected by the people of District Four. Also have the honor of serving as chair.
Good afternoon and welcome. My name's Arthur Griffin. I have the pleasure of serving as county commissioner at large.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Yvette Townsend Ingram, and I serve you at large.
Good afternoon, Tyrone Wade County Attorney.
Good afternoon, Dina D'Orio County Manager.
Good afternoon, Leslie Johnson, Deputy County Manager.
Good afternoon. Mike Bryan, Deputy County Manager and incoming county manager.
Good afternoon. Derek Ramos, Deputy County Manager and Chief of Staff.
Good afternoon. Adrian Cox, County Budget Director.
Good afternoon. Andy Fair, Interim Public Information Director.
To my right, we've got Nick and Mark and some other folks. Peter.
Good afternoon. Yvette Newman, Governmental Affairs Manager.
Good afternoon. I'm David Boyd, Deputy, or I'm sorry, Chief of National Affairs.
So you're promoting yourself, huh?
Mark Khan, I'm not a deputy.
Nick Walker, neither interim nor deputy.
Peter Penn, Deputy Partner.
All right. So that's all our deputies and everything else. If you'll rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, everybody. The board always loves when we see a packed house here. We've got a pretty full agenda today. We'll hear from the Park and Rec Commission, obviously Citizens Capital Budget Advisory Committee, and then we'll go over our capital improvement plan. The order, just for my colleagues, just so you know, the order's changed a little bit. Park and Rec Commission budget priorities will go first, then we'll go through the CIP, and then we'll go to the Citizens Capital Budget Advisory Committee. Dean, is there anything that you wanted to add before we bring them up?
Not at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So we'll start off with, I saw Kip Kaiser here, we'll start off with Park and Rec Commission
If I gotta click or operate or ask you medicine, okay.
You can use one of these, or you can click.
No, I'd rather you do it, if you don't mind. That isn't my apartment. First, I'd like to thank the Board of County Commissioners for allowing us to present the Park and Recreation Commission's budget priority recommendations to you. Hadn't always been able to do that, and we're glad we have that opportunity. These recommendations are unanimous from the PRC, and some of you who have been to our meetings would know that and probably know exactly what's on here. The PRC is well aware of the constraints for the budget. We watched the B O C C budget retreat. The manager's office did an outstanding job of revenue projection. I just found out, I was sitting next to David Boyd, and he thought that was a pretty good comment. We are also familiar with the Mecklenburg County Physical Year 2026 Budget Survey. We don't live in a vacuum. We have reviewed with Park and Recreation staff our recommendations and have received substantial and useful feedback from them. This is a good working relationship, with collaboration being the operative word. And one of our folks that we're very familiar with has this comment she made, and we printed it. "Park and Recreation is the one thing in Mecklenburg County that is for everyone." These are our priority rankings. I don't know whether one's in front of the other, but we're gonna go down them. Let's just assume they are ranked according to how we decided. But we've always come up and said repair and replace was the most important thing. Some people have used the word reinvestment, others have used the word deferred maintenance. I'm an old contractor, so I like to use English, and repair and replace is what I use. On this first item, repair and replace, we take the attitude that fix what is broken first. All existing parks and facilities should be in good to excellent condition. And I kind of lifted that out of one of these magazines that I see quite often, and I thought it was very good to have that as a goal. We've had an increase in our park portfolio. We've done a lot of work lately, and the commission ought to be thanked, that's you guys, for funding this. County managers funded this increase in the park system, and we've replaced a lot of items. But that's caused an increase in the size, and it's been over a period of time, and it's going to require some additional repair and replacement. One of the things that we have noted is that the need in the CIP is a five-year type program, and some of the stuff is so bad that it needs fixing now. So we've asked for some more money in the CIP, but, excuse me, in the reinvestment budget to take care of places that are five years out. A good example was a park that I think Commissioner Powell talked about, Springfield Park. We got it on the CIP, but the thing's a mess. It's in a priority community, so the staff used some of the funds that y'all added to that account last year, and they're trying to get it where it's livable or usable. And I think that was very good, which prompted us to decide to try to add $10 million to that account, because the five-year program isn't quite getting it when you have to wait five years. And I just wanted to make that point, that I know we can scramble money and fix some certain things, but our playbook listed a bunch of parks that needed work. We've added them to the CIP, but five years is a very long time. All right? If we can do this however y'all want to, ask questions about any of this now, or we can wait till the end, and that's...
Just go through your presentation, Kip, and then we'll ask questions at the end.
Okay. Well, next would be a land acquisition, and that'll be Ann Harrison.
Good afternoon. I'm Ann Harrison, Vice Chair of the PRC. Twenty-three percent. According to Charlotte Stormwater, that is the amount of impervious material covering Met County. By some estimates, 4.6 million people will live in this region by the year 2050. For those reasons and several other, the PRC is unanimous in their recommendation that there be absolutely no pause or reduction in land acquisition. In the almost seven years that I've been part of PRC, to my knowledge, the land acquisition team has never operated with a full staff. The PRC advises that AFM enlists third-party brokers in the purchasing of land. Not only is this a good business decision, it would be a more efficient way of purchasing land while saving taxpayer dollars. A very wise person recently told me, "We must advocate for what is important, even when it's difficult." Purchasing land in priority communities will be difficult, but we must do it. The PRC strongly recommends $50 million for land acquisition. And keep in mind, $50 million in today's dollars is not what it was a mere three years ago even. Thank you for your time.
Cowden Rayburn will do the next item.
So next up is programming, and a few of these are really people-related advocacy items. When we go to meetings and do our advisory council meetings, we frequently hear about programming. You can think of programming as sort of how an individual acts, interacts with a rec center or park asset. So this is everything from therapeutic and inclusive programming to flag football for children, to nutritional programming for seniors, really runs the full gamut, but it's one of the priority areas we hear from residents in the county. We also have the pleasure of hearing from rec center directors and other park and rec employees who are so enthusiastic and love the programming that they get to offer. They have to do it on the basis of the people and the talents that those individuals bring to the rec centers. So this is really a people-related ask. We'd ask for an increase of $400,000 in this area, because we know how much it means to our residents. Routine maintenance is next up. This is different than the big capital R reinvestment that Kip advocated for earlier. This is, you know, things like fixing a bench here or there. You know, as Kip reiterated, we've added to our park and rec portfolio. We have, we just have more to do. There's more work to do on a very basic level. We recommend increasing this by a million dollars. You know, we, most of what we hear from residents when they have a complaint is something to do with routine maintenance, whether it be a tree knocked down, or a bench broken, or a basketball ball goal, or the piece of it broken. This would all fall under that category. Again, we just keep adding to this portfolio, requires more in the maintenance budget. Safety, security, and customer service. So this, there is what we think is a pretty unfair perception that our parks are not the safest in the world. We really think they are. We think if you dive into the data, our parks are fantastic community assets that are safe. A lot of folks tell us that they feel safer in our parks when there are rangers and other park staff visible. That requires hiring folks and having patrols more frequently in there. You know, our rangers really serve as customer service liaisons throughout parks. You know, they are not out there with, you know, a resting authority for issues that come up, but if you need to find a restroom, if you have a question about how to use the facility, if you have a question about hours or a complaint, they are the person you interact with. They are how a lot of our residents interact with our park and rec facilities. We really recommend increasing this budget here to enhance safety, security, and customer service in our parks through rangers, cameras, lighting, other sorts of innovative tactics that our park and rec staff takes. And then part-time to full staff positions. So we frequently hear about our part-time staff members in our park and rec department, whether those be rangers or maintenance individuals. You know, we really think converting some of those part-time openings, a lot of those are open. What we hear is that we're not fully staffed up there. As you all know, staffing coming out of COVID hiring in any industry has been extremely tough. We think that we might have better luck filling some of these positions if we were able to convert them to full-time positions. Just a different tack we think we could take to maybe get to a better staffing level and put a better experience out there for our residents who are interacting with our park and rec staff. Kip, I believe this one is yours.
All right. That's our annual budget, and this might be a chance, if you've got any questions, we're gonna make a CIP thing in a second, but if you've got questions about the annual budget, maybe we can entertain those if you're...
Kip, do your recommendations, because this is your last slide, and then we'll take questions.
Okay. All right. We'll do that. We've been, we've kind of, of late, got a chance to review the CIP recommendations. Basically, what we found was there wasn't any community recreation centers in the priority communities. And I think I've sat in front of you guys several times, or stood in front of you, and said that we're for children, and that is a children-based thing, is those community recreation centers. And in the priority communities, we haven't got, we haven't got any on the agenda. And so we thought that was a problem. We found that there are really only two outdoor swimming pools in Mecklenburg County for children in priority communities, and that wasn't what we liked either. The middle school athletic facilities, we have put that on the annual report to you. We've been waiting on CMS and Park and Rec to get together, but the thing was set up for a five-years-away program. So somehow, we were waiting to get this agreement done, and to me, that was kind of an unnecessarily wait, but I think they're about ready to have it. So I think we need to step in and look at middle school, this middle school deal where we've got two, maybe three, middle schools that could be funded by the manager and by you guys, and it would really take the pressure off land in the priority communities. It's very expensive, but CMS really doesn't take care of their athletic fields and facilities like Park and Rec could. And it'd be a good thing to take the pressure off land acquisition in these communities, and it's for children again. We would like to see another park in the priority communities. Don't have it. We've added several repaired things, and there are a couple of, a couple of places that are being looked at, but that's a solution, and I'm kind of solution-based. We're into recommendations, and I think we'd like to have another new park in a priority I think we just covered the solution of the lack of field space. So that's kind of where we are on this CIP.
Okay. Thank you. What we'll do is open it up to questions or comments from board members. I'm gonna start with, the order we'll go in is Commissioner Powell, Dunlap, then we'll go to Commissioner Townsend Ingram. Three minutes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you for your presentation. Thank you for your commitment, dedication, and like thoroughness. It's a really good presentation. I'm just gonna go through and see what I wrote down. Thank you for, and I'm trying to understand the programming request. I just want to understand, is this specifically additional funding for seniors? Like, is there any specific ask? Because all the categories that you gave, it's for everyone, and so are there speci...
It is hard to nail it down to any specific request, because what we're told by really rec center facility managers is that they have to deploy the talents and passions of their staff members to really fill out their programming. And so I would hate to say we need more of this, that, or the other, because it's really a function of the folks they have at these rec centers. But we hear all the time about how much therapeutic and inclusive programming has meant to this family, that family, or another family. We hear a lot about how youth sports have really filled a post-school, a schooltime gap for a family. So it's, I think it's across the board, rather than specific to any one group.
Thank you. Because I hear the same, and then it's different throughout the county. So I hear more for seniors in North Mecklenburg. I always hear about therapeutics, so thank you for that. In part of the increase for safety, security, and customer service, I keep hearing, I keep hearing about lighting, and I think sometimes lighting's good and sometimes it's really bad. And so, you know, I just want to have that mindfulness about not putting lighting everywhere and really talking to staff about where it's the best, because there are many consequences to having lighting in some places you don't want it. So in your CIP recommendations, I'm just thinking about how, they're all important recommendations, but some of them should include community partners, and so I'm just thinking, like, you know, swimming pools, we really need CRVA to be a partner. We really need CMS to be a partner on the middle schools. I'm surprised not to see a regional rec center in here, but I don't know your rationale for that.
Well, regional rec centers are very expensive, and...
Do you want to come up to the microphone? Can you move to the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Regional rec centers are very expensive. We're probably, I'm not totally estimating what they would cost, but it wouldn't surprise me to be 70 to 100 million bucks. That's a lot of money. That's the whole budget, and somehow, that may need to be out of the CIP realm. We did find out there was a serious need for community rec centers. So that was where we were very interested in recommending things. Originally, I think y'all had four planned. We've got two now. They're very popular. We've got the Wise kind of on the down a little bit. The Wise are kind of selling out in some cases, but they've, they're kind of a replacement for the regional rec centers, and if they're going away, we may need to have some. But this year, I think there was a budget issue, and it's kind of hard to stand up here, and when you know there's a budget problem, advocating for a 75 to $100 million facility when you need other things.
I appreciate that. So you made the recommendations with consideration, too?
Well, we're not denying you don't need them. I mean, they're popular. You probably, you guys know that the north and the east, those things are very, very popular. They've got a lot of land with all of them that do a lot of things. They've got swimming pools inside of them, but they are $100 million, and...
Thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Dunlap.
No questions at this time.
Commissioner Townsend Ingram.
Hey, Kip. Good to see you again. Thank you for the invitation to the meetings. I really enjoyed it. You guys had a lot of people show up, so I appreciate it. So, and again, I'm gonna ask you for grace, because I'm the newest one. Is there more detail in the CIP plan that tells us things like, you know, if you have parks that are, if the main priority is to repair and replace, how many of those need to be repaired and replaced? And is there like an equity schedule, so we know that this community is a priority, this one comes next, that kind of thing? Additionally, like the equipment that we're replacing it with or that we're purchasing, is there like a life expectancy of those that fits into what our budget priorities might be, considering the fact that our capital improvement plan is over five years?
I think what you'll find is that we're getting ready to do a, Cowden may speak better to this, we're getting ready to do a new playbook update, and some of the items that are in there will be, answer the questions you were asking. It's like the condition of the, we fixed a lot of things. There's been a lot of money spent, but there's other things to spend money on, and that list is, be part of the evaluation that I think the park and rec staff is gonna do. So they will have that answer, and we also, as you know, we've, you've been to our meetings, we will be discussing that at future meetings. I think the new update on the, on the new playbook, or we call it master plan, which we're obligated to be a part of, is coming soon, in the next six months to a year. I think they're working on that, but that'll be a staff-generated thing and not necessarily what we're involved with.
Yeah.
Although we go out and meet, we go out to the parks and see them. They originally had them listed as D and F parks, and they really fixed a lot of that stuff, but there's, that was five years ago. So now we're in the...
There's a lot of convincing that is done when you show, okay, this is the number that we had, we've improved this amount, and it costs us this amount of money. That's kind of like what I was looking for, leaning into, so that we can know that, you know, okay, we can't cut this, because this is in a priority area, an opportunity zone, and they haven't had any improvements. They're not, they're on the list first, you know, and prioritizing those.
One of the things that we've got is that $10 million we asked for in repair and replace. There's a number of parks that need that spent on them now, and that doesn't say five years from now, that says pretty much now.
All right. Next up, we'll go to Commissioner Meyer, Commissioner Griffin, then Commissioner Rodriguez McDowell.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I love the simplicity of it. It's very direct, and I like that. Just a couple of questions. How many, how, over the last few years, how many times have you recommended the position of the third-party broker?
I'd say over the last two to three years, three years plus, we've talked about
that. Lee Altman and I had a long discussion about it. We hear that problem. We don't know that there's been any solution generated, but that's just the way business works, and I don't know why we don't do it that way.
Okay.
Okay. And also, you have put in, for each one, what you, what the increase, what you want the increase to the budget, but, so what's the total that you recommend? What's the total increase? And what was it before? Like, you didn't say, you just, like, for example, routine maintenance, you recommend routine maintenance is increased by 1 million. What is it now?
Well, we don't know. We haven't been told.
Well, I mean, what's in the, no, I mean, what's in the budget? And this past budget?
We don't-
So, so when I'm asking you, what's the increase by 1.1 million, you're saying you want more than what's going to be recommended?
Yep.
Yes. We don't have the current, I don't have the current budget.
Okay, okay. So what, when you say an increase, it's more than what is recommended, but you don't know what's recommended?
No, and that's not my normal MO. I like to have a number to defend, and I've said that in front of y'all before.
Yeah.
And we're here at May, almost May, and that's when the budget goes in, and we don't know.
Okay. I just thought this, I just wanted to be clear. I thought it was from the budget before, but it's not. Okay. I understand. And that actually is all I have. Thank you. You know I support the parks.
Commissioner Griffin.
Thank you all for your, for your presentation. Several of your slides that you presented originally dealt with people other than land and deferred maintenance. That's people, but more stuff. So are there, is just people? Are there any special characteristics of the people? Because you annualize those on a regular basis, would be the first question. The second question, your recommendations are all stuff, though, in terms of new community centers, middle school, athletics, et cetera. And it would be nice to kind of figure out what the people costs. And I saw, you do have like a million dollars on one of them for just routine maintenance. I'm assuming that's people, but can you speak to the people on here in terms of how many and what types of folk? And then clearly, I got a question for Dana, too. You know, I'm always supportive of the, of the regional rec center. It is a big-ticket item. We have, what, two? One, two?
Two.
Two. And I'm not real sure how to make a recommendation or presentation to taxpayers when we short other places, but I still think there ought to be some way to figure that out at some point and make sure that Southwest Mecklenburg County gets to participate in the same kind of programming as north and east. But I just speak to the people, and if there's any specificity about the type of people and how much money that costs, and the, what's the other one? People, regional rec, partnership with the schools about middle school, athletics, and those are, those are the two. Thank you. Oh, yes, something for the manager.
Yes, sir.
Do we, is, what we're going to talk about a little later on, is it still a five-year rolling CIP? Because if this is '26, it'll be '21, right?
We're going to '21, yes.
It'll be '21. Okay. All right.
30, actually. It'll be FY '30 is the next one. '26 was F Y 20, '29, '30. What we'll present today will be for FY '30.
Okay. All right. All right.
The operations, if you build a new facility, it's going to take more people to run it. It's going to take more maintenance, it's going to take more operations. And they do an operational needs assessment each time that they prepare a new facility. Even a greenway requires an operational needs assessment, I think. So that's kind of the answer. We didn't prepare for any of the particular items to talk about operational needs assessment, because they were mainly greenways that are in the new CIP. But that may be part of the answer. The other issue as far as the regional rec centers, we've had a couple of meetings zoomed in that I attended, and we started talking about Ramblewood as a site. Ramblewood is a site that was once a soccer complex, still is, really, but it's got a really unique spot in it, got plenty of parking, and it could be a site potentially for a rec center in the area you're talking about. Only takes money, and money's always a problem.
Well, it's a lot of, sorry. Thank you.
Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to piggyback on Commissioner Griffin there on the regional rec center. So I think it would be helpful to kind of understand, and I don't know if this is part of the master plan, you know, the parks' master plan, or like, when, like, do you have a vision now of how far in the future you would be planning to do, you know, regional rec center? Dana, that's a question for you, because I'm not sure if you already sort of had it, like, you know, less, it would be more than five years away, since it's not in the current CIP.
So, you know, first of all, the MEC playbook drives, you know, all the planning that we do in parking recreation, so let me say that's the first thing. But I'll be perfectly honest, to your point about the cost of regional recreation centers, they cost a lot to build, and they cost a lot to run. And while they're wonderful assets, we do have a lot of community recreation centers and neighborhood parks and things that require investment. And so it was my priority that we work on those things first and not invest in any more regional recreation centers until we have made the proper investments in those assets. But of course, that can change.
Okay. Yeah, I think, so when is the next MEC playbook? That's coming up.
When are you guys doing your update?
We will put out the call for consultants to help us facilitate it this summer, and we will begin the work on it in earnest this fall.
Okay, great. Thank you. That helps kind of, you know, contextualize it a little bit. My other concern is always the part-time to full-time staff positions. This is an area of concern that has always been my concern about, you know, I want the county to be an example of an employer that doesn't employ people on the basis of, you know, how many hours can they work when we don't have to pay them benefits? And so I really support the idea of, and maybe this is part of MEC playbook, like, I don't really know how you'd figure that out, of how many are actually, you know, seasonal that want just to be part-timers and that's appropriate for the part-timers. But I think there's another category of folks who would want to be full-time, who are not given that as an option. And so maybe if that's something we can add to our planning in MEC playbook, I would really like to know, what is the price tag of that? What, you know, what are we really talking about for, for Mecklenburg County to be an example of an employer that we would want in our community that, you know, pays people, you know, a fair wage and benefits and offers them full-time instead of trying to, trying to kind of, you know, wiggle out of that?
Well, we don't do it to try to wiggle out of paying full-time salary and benefits. It's based on the need that we have in the department, and of course, seasonality is a big part of how we staff parking rec. But the parking rec department did come with this budget request to talk about transitioning some of their limited part-time positions into full-time. So we are considering that as part of the FY '26 budget.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Well, let me start off by saying thank you for the presentation. I have two things. One is for you, Dana. To go back to this conversation around these regional rec centers, is it fair to say, or do I hear you saying essentially, because of the cost, it could really pull away from resources that would be needed to do what, what they're saying in the very first slide, essentially repair and replace? I think that's, that's what they use. But does that kind of pull away from that when, when we have to allocate those resources to a regional rec center?
Well, I think they're two different buckets. So the repair and replace is more in the general fund that we do every year, where the CIP is where the regional rec centers come.
Okay.
So they are two separate buckets, although they are paid for all out of the general fund, so it does have a bit of an impact. But, I mean, I love regional rec centers, but not everybody can access them. So if you don't have access to transportation and other things, you can't go to a regional rec center. So we have to make sure the assets that we have in individual communities and neighborhoods are just as nice and just as well-maintained as our regional rec centers, and I don't think we're there yet.
I got you. So thank you for the clarification. I wanted to make sure I was clear. And then, Kip, just have a question for you all. When you, when we look at CIP and your recommendations, help us understand the level of interaction that you have with the, what is it, the CCBAC?
Absolutely none.
Absolutely what?
None, zero.
Okay, why is that?
Ask y'all's decision. You have to ask the staff.
Okay. The question was, they're making CIP recommendations, so I wanted to understand how much interaction that they have with the CCBAC with respect to the recommendations that they're making, and he's saying none. And that's, and you're saying that's-
Mr. Chairman, I think they knew about the CIP back in December, and we weren't told about it until recently, and we're over there dealing with it all the time. And it's kind of a sore spot with me, as you know, and the rest of you know. I think it's ridiculous, if I can put that in English.
So the CCBAC is a separate entity from the Parking Recreation Commission. The Parking Recreation Commission makes recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners. The individual departments make recommendations to the CCBAC. And so the CCBAC reviews what is submitted by departments. They don't review what's submitted by various advocacy groups, whether it be the Air Quality Commission, or, you know, any other commissions that we have in Louisa, or the Parking Rec Commission. They look at the recommendations and the submissions that are given to them by the various departments.
Got you.
But the board has an opportunity to hear directly from the Parking Recreation Commission.
Yeah, and I think one of the things, I know, I've heard, Kip, you know, we've had this discussion previously to a degree, and I know from your perspective, I think it's important to have access to that group. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Yeah.
We didn't know how much each item cost.
Excuse me.
I kind of knew, because I'm a contractor, and I knew what was previously done.
Mr. Kaiser, please use the microphone. Thank you.
I kind of could predict what they cost, but we asked for the information, and we were denied it. When they originally did the CIP for 20, what was it, 2428, we were denied it, although we found out about it. But that's, some of the items that have not been added to the CIP is kind of, not necessarily on the playbook, but they're going by that original list. And we're moving on down the list, not arguing with the list, but there's some things that, that's our role as liaison, and when we see there isn't any swimming pools, there isn't any things being done in the priority communities, we questioned it. And, but we don't have the facts to make a firm statement. But what we told you here is we don't have those recreation centers in this CIP. We don't have any swimming pools in it, and we're questioning the athletic facilities are not in it. So I can't tell you any other reason. I don't know why we couldn't know that. It's not-
Well, I think on balance, I think on balance, Kip, now, now, one thing, I think on balance, you know, there was a question of timing that I think Deputy County Manager Johnson and our new parking rec director tried to solve, too, on that piece. So I think we did move the ball down the field. We're not exactly where we want to be, but we did move the ball down the field. So I think it's important for us to make sure that we're, we're being balanced in, at least where we were and then where we are now, from my perspective, anyway.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I think it's important, because we're going to have this discussion, it's important for the community to understand whose responsibility lies where. And the parking recreation is an advisory to this board.
Right.
CCBAC is an entirely different board, and they don't report to, nor do they have responsibility to parking recreation. And so the way it's supposed to work, if they have need of information, that request should come to the board, who they report to, and then the board facilitates the information to the CCBAC.
No, I think that's fair, and I appreciate the clarification. I think one of the things that we were, that we hashed out in a, in a meeting that we had, just so everybody's clear, is that there was certain pieces of information that I think that they felt like they did not have access to or could not get access to. And so, be that as it may, again, I think that Deputy County Manager and our new parking rec director helped us move the ball down the field. As I said before, we may not be where we want to be all the way, but we're certainly further along. So I wanted to put the, I wanted to put it in context, but I appreciate that, for sure. So thank you so much for being here.
Mr. Chair, can we recognize the PRC that are here?
Please, please do.
The members?
Please do.
Well, I was just going to-
Please do.
Can the, can the members of the PRC stand up, so we can recognize you? Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Andy Filsec, Park and Rec Commission, South Region.
Bill Collier, again, the small towns.
Mark Talbot, Central Region.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Meyer, for doing that. Thank you all for being here and the presentation. Appreciate it. All right, next up will be David Boyd for CIP.
Good afternoon. We're going to go over the '26 to '23 CIP. And the first thing we're going to talk about is our funding model, which really drives what we can afford to pay for. And backing up one step to talk about how the five-year rolling plan came to be. So it used to be we would do CIP planning in five-year chunks. We'd do five years. We would wait for three or four years and then put together the next five-year chunk. And we do these in five-year chunks. And it didn't provide for enough flexibility for changing priorities, changing conditions, those types of things. And it, it also didn't give us as much runway to look ahead. As you got towards the end of year three, year four, you could only see one or two years ahead of what was coming up. And so we always wanted to have at least five years with the runway ahead of us to not only add an additional fifth year, so right now we're talking about 2030, or 2030 as being the, the new fifth year, but it also gives us a chance to evaluate everything that leads up to there as things change. You know, and just thinking of current events, you know, with changes in the economic landscape and what may or may not happen with cost of projects, right? We now have the ability to reevaluate the entire plan as we, as we learn new things. What's a priority today could change, and something we've got slated for three years from now, something changes and we'd like to make changes to that. This process gives us the ability to do it, as well as to understand what we learn about the timing of projects, the cost of projects, the scopes of projects, as we get further, as we get closer to those actual projects happening. So each year, as we, as we run out the fiscal year, we need to take a look at how did the prior year end? How much did we spend compared to what we expected to spend? What else happened? We also need all of our partner parts, partner agencies that are delivering projects to take a look at how are they progressing? What do they now know that they didn't know last year? What are any updated changes in project schedules and spending expectations? Because the cash flows for projects is what ultimately drives affordability and how much we're going to be able to add. It also helps us understand the extent to which we need to borrow money. When and how much money do we need to borrow? And it also gives us an opportunity to, to look at our revenue assumptions and what had we assumed previously, and how can we update those based on what we know today? So I will tell you that when we went through this exercise, and we found that in 2024- So I will tell you that when we went through this exercise and we found that in 2024, we spent far less than we expected to spend. That projects were progressing at a slower pace and spending was progressing at a slower pace. That, in turn, causes the rest of our cash flows to push out, right? If we're not as far ahead as we thought we'd be at the end of 2024, then we're going to be spending less in '25, '26, and so on. That had a real impact, and I think we talked about this a little bit at the retreat, that when we did borrow some money in January, we borrowed, we had planned to borrow about $400 million for non-school projects, and we only needed to borrow about $250. We also borrowed at a lower interest rate than we had expected. So while all of those things are, can be viewed as a negative from a, you know, how fast our progress progressing standpoint, it is a positive in terms of, you know, do we have some more capacity in the plan compared to what we expected? You know, the longer we can wait to borrow money and the later we can spend money, the better off we're going to be just from a capacity standpoint. We also, you know, were able to update slightly our revenue projections in a slightly positive manner from what was in this model compared to the overall revenue projections for the general fund. So I'm not going to really want to get into the details of this, but just kind of give you order of magnitude of how much we're spending in one. I do want to, we need to correct one error in here. There's a land in here that, or there is a line in here that says "land" that should not have been included. So if you just ignore that, we'll talk about land in a little bit. But just from a, from a spending standpoint and a capacity, look, we have projects that are currently approved to start between fiscal year '25 and fiscal year '29 in the currently approved plan. But we're going to be spending on those projects until 2033, right? Because projects that start in 2029, some of those take a long time if we're just designing them in 2029 and they're not finished up until 2033. You can see that a lot in CMS, in their project spending, right? Those projects were '24 to '28, and some of those projects that are not starting until later in '28 are going to extend for a number of years before those are completed, because it just takes a long time to build certain things. But I think the other takeaway here is we're talking about spending $2.1 billion on non-school projects, along with the money on, for school projects, gets us nearly to $5 billion worth of spending on what is currently approved. So we have a lot of capital spending that is already on the books. So what are the assumptions that we've got in the forward-looking model? Because now that we've updated what's happened in the past and what do we know about projects that are currently approved? What are we assuming going forward? So first of all, we don't have any assumption of any additional tax increases other than ones that we have already been talking about for a couple of years. That is, two cents in 2028 for the school bonds and one cent in 2029 for non-school projects. That is baked into the projects that are approved and our future capacity, as well as no use of general fund fund balance for capital projects. That this is self-contained within the resources that we're setting aside specifically for debt service and capital spending. So then we had to go through a process to evaluate project submittals that we got. We received project requests from AFM, who handles most of the county projects, Central Piedmont Community College, the library, Park and Rec, and then new this year, which I believe I also mentioned to you all at the retreat, is we have moved the ELAP spending into the CIP, because by and large, as that program has matured, most of those projects are more capital in nature and need to be considered along with the rest of our capital spending. And I think you will also see that because this was a new way of treating ELAP spending, that we told those folks that, hey, when you submit those projects, they can begin as early as 2026, because this was a new process. So we have ELAP spending that begins, recommended to begin next year throughout the entire time period. Again, another benefit of the rolling CIP process, we can make changes as we go. Everyone else was basically talking about projects that would start in fiscal year '30. And we looked at them from a variety of lenses. Obviously, the departments that submitted them had prioritizations and rankings for the projects. The CCBAC talked with each of the departments that submitted projects, and they had an opinion. We talked with Dina and her executive team. And then obviously, the funding model was a big component, is how we evaluated it to come up with our recommendation for funding. So this is what we got this year. Forty-seven new projects, and you can see that there's a large number of ELAP-related projects. As I said, you know, these weren't just for 2030, and this totaled over $323 million. You have a handout in your materials there that will give you a brief description of each of the projects by year that were submitted. The new one, what's actually here is all the projects that are approved or recommended to be approved from '26 through '30. And the ones that are new in that start year have the word "new" next to them, so you can tell which ones are new. The ones that do not say "new" are projects that are already currently approved within the plan. And then we provided a brief description of the project, and then we've got folks in the departments here if you have specific questions about any of those projects. The other thing that we did after, we talked extensively about land acquisition at the retreat and in conversations with the manager and the executive team, is we recognized that we needed to add additional resources to the plan for land acquisition. We had, if you recall, when we set the '24 to '28 CIP, we had added, you know, like $10 million inflated into the plan in addition to the other fund balance that got added to land acquisition. But we wanted to put some recurring funding into the CIP, as, again, we talked about at the retreat, to get that number to $30 million from '26 through '30 before we started adding any other projects into the plan. So we wanted to, we knew that we were going to have a little bit of additional capacity because of the slower pace of spending and the reduced borrowing and the better interest rates than we had assumed. So that added about $113 million to the plan, over and above what was there, and that gives us $150 million total in the CIP for new land acquisition. All right, and what you'll see going forward here is each of the requests from each department, along with which ones are recommended for funding. The yellow highlights are the one that's recommended. And let me back up one step. So $323 million of new projects was obviously more than we were going to be able to add to the plan. When we talked last year, we had built the model trying to reserve about $150 million worth of capacity from 2030 going forward for both non-county projects and $150 million for, I'm sorry, for non-school projects, along with $150 million of capacity for school projects yet to be identified. And so we knew we weren't going to be able to fund $323 million worth of new projects into the plan, especially if we were going to add $113 million of land acquisition to the plan. So we had to find a way to pare this back a bit. And so in working with the departments, we talked with AFM about which one of these projects might most likely be okay to push out. So the Fourth Street parking deck needs to be expanded, and they submitted that as a project request for 2030. We're going to push, we're recommending that we push that out to 2031 and fund the rest of the requests there, which include some modifications at the new courthouse, some interior finish replacements at the courthouse, renovation of the Clifton Johnson Building for CJS, and painting of the WTVI Tower. Central Piedmont Community College had three requests. Renovation of a fitness center at their Marankas Campus for their basic law enforcement training program. Renovation to support an expansion of their EV technology program, and then a parking expansion at the Harris Campus. We are recommending we fund the two there in yellow and not fund the EV technology program expansion project at this time. The library submitted three requests. New library, Thomas Burrow Branch Library. I believe we have land acquisition in the current plan for that site. So this is the construction, a renovation of the Allegra Westbrooks branch, and then a renovation of the Mint Hill Library. We are recommending that the Mint Hill Library renovation be pushed out to 2031. And then Park and Recreation, relying on their playbook plan, submitted these five projects, and we're recommending four of them with the recommendation that the McAlpine Creek Greenway, the stretch between Providence Road and Colony Road, be pushed out to 2031, but fund their top four requests there. So then we get to the ELAP projects, and we approached this a little bit differently. I think AFM did a great job in responding to our asks, that they go back and take a look at the projects that they submitted to see where there are opportunities to reduce costs or otherwise pare down what was being requested. So they had originally requested 32 projects in total, and they come in three buckets. Deep energy retrofits, and I'll do my best to explain this, and then Mark can make fun of me later for how I explain this. But this is basically taking our buildings and as the need for the components of the building need to be replaced, can they go into the buildings and find more energy-efficient ways to replace the components of the building, whether it be lighting, HVAC, plumbing, and other ways that we can reduce energy consumption, reduce greenhouse gas consumption, and save money? The other one is EV chargers for our growing electric vehicle fleet as we transition our ICV, our internal congestion, internal combustion vehicles to electric vehicles, as well as some onsite solar energy generation projects. Originally, those had a cost of $91 million, and they were able to go back and take a look at those and reduce that cost to $61 million. So let's start first with the deep energy retrofit projects. So these extend again from fiscal year '26 through fiscal year '30. And you can see the original cost there, along with, in most cases, a reduced updated cost. And I'll talk about how they evaluated that in a minute. And then we've got one there at the Valerie Woodard Center. That was some additional funding that they were requesting for a project that is currently underway at VCW that they are not going to need, so they pulled that request. But for each one of these, you likely can't see this, but what I'm trying to illustrate is they went through each of these requests, and they went through an analysis of what are all the components that are needing to be replaced? They looked at the cost of those replacements versus just what a normal replacement would be, how much energy might be saved, what's the useful life of the project? How long would it take to pay back the additional investment? They looked at how much greenhouse gases would be reduced and kind of evaluated which of these makes sense if we have to look at it with a little closer lens? And like, in this particular instance, this is the Louisa Building on Suttle. There were three components here that the payback period was longer than the useful life of what they were going to put in with a limited amount of greenhouse gas reduction. And so they were able to reduce this project from almost $2.7 million to $2.15 million and take $527,000 off the cost of the project. So they did this type of analysis for each one of these projects to pare down this request by $14.7 million. From an electric vehicle charger standpoint, they originally had a cost of $9.9 million. They identified the chargers that were going to be added at Corralt, the new CRC East and the new CRC Southwest, and are going to incorporate the scope of that work in those projects. And the cost that we currently have budgeted for those projects is sufficient to take care of those additional chargers when those capital projects are done. And then the other one is onsite solar. There were six projects that were submitted, and there's two there that are recommended to be pushed out a couple of years, probably past 2031. The four that are recommended are rooftop solar projects that have a lower cost than the two that would be at Matthew Sportsplex or VCW. Those were going to be ground-mounted solar projects, which have a higher cost. And so we're going to push those out for now in an attempt to just get to the number that we can afford. Talking very briefly about CMS, we wanted to check in with them on their plan. According to them, all of the projects that they had intended to do are on track. The projects that are underway are those on the left side there that were started in '24 or started this year, along with the remaining projects that are slated to start '26, '27, '28. As we talked about last year, we are not asking CMS to try to identify now what they might need to do in '29, '30, or '31, but instead, we're reserving $150 million worth of capacity in those years, and then hoping to work with them on smaller, more frequent bond referendums to pay for those projects as we get there. Whether or not $150 million is sufficient to meet their needs is another question, but that's what we can sustain with the constraints that I mentioned before about no fund balance and no more tax increases other than what we had originally planned. So kind of where did we end up here at the end? Our final recommendations is still an addition of $328 million to the plan, which is more than what we had talked about last year with $150 million each year going forward. And I hope that we're able to do that each year is somewhat under-promise and over-deliver because of a reasonable amount of conservatism that we bake in. I think the other thing that is enabling us to add this much in 2030 is that much of the positive that we experienced was in fiscal year '25, right? So much of the spending that we expected to have already gone through before we got to '25 has been delayed. We were able to borrow less in fiscal year '25, and the cumulative effect of that between now and 2030 kind of causes that, it's kind of like compound interest, the most powerful force in the universe. It just, those big numbers get bigger as you get further out. So in total, adding almost $329 million to the plan to fund 38 projects, as well as the land acquisition that you see there. So in the background, what we're trying to do is make sure that this plan still is affordable and fits within our model. So you've seen this all before. These are some of the metrics that we look at. That top-left one is really about affordability, how much of our total expenditures is debt service. We have a policy limit that it should not exceed 17%. You can see as we get out there in 2031, when all this stuff is done, we've borrowed, you know, much of what we're planning to borrow over the next several years, we start to bump up against that limit, right? But we're way back here in, we're way back here in '25 and '26. And we have reasonably conservative... conservative assumptions built into the plan and we've got time to adjust if we think we're going to actually exceed that by the time we get there. The same with that component on the right. The right side there is debt per capita, which I would argue is a less important criteria, but it is something that we look at. We start to bump up against that in a couple of years. This is actually a component we've been talking with our financial advisor about is that how important is this one to the rating agencies and is this something that we need to be concerned about or should we reevaluate it because this number hasn't changed for quite some time? And over time, we perhaps just need to raise that limit. 10-year payout ratio is just how much of our debt pays off within 64%, which is a metric that rating agencies look at. In this one, we want to be, we want to be at that number or slightly higher. And by and large, the fact that most of the debt we borrow is 20-year debt with level principal, it kind of happens automatically. So we're good there. But then the one that we have been talking about is just how much debt do we have outstanding? That bottom right chart where we go from where we're at now, which is, you know, less than $2 billion up to, you know, more than $3.5 billion worth of debt between now and what's that year there, 2032, looks like that's when that that number kind of caps out. But what I like to see and what I want to see here is that it stops climbing and starts to go back down as the current debt that we have pays off, but we're still adding more. But is there a peak to it where we level off and that's where that future capacity number comes in that we talk about? So next step is to get whatever feedback you all have. You'll hear from Gabe Mathlis from the CCBAC after I'm done. We'll make any changes that we need to make, come back to you here on April 22nd if we need to, if there are any changes that we need to make. And then the CIP would be adopted along with the overall budget on June 3rd. Questions?
Thank you. We're going to go in this order. We'll go with Commissioner Dunlap, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, and then we're going to come to Commissioner Griffin.
All right, thank you. Two questions. In 2029, I think you say, in addition to the two cents tax increase for CMS, there's another one cent increase for capital projects. Is that right?
There's one in 2028 and two, let's, let me make sure I got this right, two cents in 2028 for CMS, one cent for county projects in 2029.
Right. Okay. And so does a penny still generate 18 million a year?
So a penny now is $19 million?
19 million.
Yeah.
So my question is, what would we have to reduce the project? What amount would we have to reduce?
I think it's 30 million.
30 million, okay. So...
Sorry, I'm off by $10 million, sorry.
You really are, that's a big, that's a big off.
30.1.
Okay. To avoid, to avoid the one cent sales tax increase in 2029, how much would we have to reduce the CIP? That was the first question.
So that is not an amount I can stand here and calculate for you. I mean, one cent, like we just said, is 30 million bucks.
Right.
But it's not that easy.
I know because it's over the years.
Right. It's, well, what further complicates it is much of the CIP is paid for with debt, which is paid for over 20 years. So I'd have to go back and, and take some tax increase out and then tell you what kind of hole exists in my model if I do that.
Okay. I'd be, I'd be interested in knowing that. I don't know if anybody else says or not. And then there was another question, Mr. Chair, and I can't remember where it is. Can you come back to me?
Come back.
Yes, please.
Sure. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Yeah, I got so many questions. I might have to have a one-on-one, you know, because it might take a lot of explaining on your part to help me understand some of this. What I kind of took away from what you said was that we had to, we were able to borrow less than what we had planned.
That's right.
And in a fairly significant way. When you say 400 million versus 250 million, I go, that's, that's pretty good. But you described it as a positive and a negative and this is the part where it gets real fuzzy to me and that there was a lower interest rate. Sounds very positive. And so I'm sort of going where I, I don't know if Commissioner Dunlap was going there, but trying to dial back on the tax increases for the CIP, especially when our general fund, you know, it looks like we're having a very tight year. And so I'm trying to understand how these things work together, the general fund and the CIP tax increases and how we can even that out so that we're not having jumps in one or the other. Because wasn't, you just said that in '28, we're going up two cents. This was the projection and in '29, one cent. But wasn't there also a 2027 increase?
No, that's, that's all that we had projected.
So, okay, so there was two years of zero then? I'm trying to remember back to the charts where we had FY '25, where we had one cent and then FY '26.
We did one in '24, one in '25 and then these two.
24, 25, okay. So then there was two years of no increase.
That's right.
Okay.
So your, so we borrowed $150 million less now. We didn't avoid borrowing it. We've just pushed it out.
Okay.
Right?
It's going to be borrowed because we still have to borrow.
That's right. So we just didn't have to do it now.
Okay.
So that avoids a couple of years of paying interest. And if we, if we take all the benefit of that in a lower tax rate in the future, then all of the additional capacity and the new stuff we've added in here also goes away. Right? So we are recommending to use the positive benefit of slower cash flow, less borrowing now and lower interest rates to be able to add some of the things into the CIP that we wouldn't otherwise be able to add. So you can't do, if you take away the taxing, some of the future tax increases, that also takes away some of the projects that we're able to fund in the plan. And then currently, they're really, we have a fixed amount of the tax rate. What's the 11.83 cents? Is that the right number, Adrian?
Let me confirm for you. Yeah, it's 11.57.
11.56?
11.57. 11.57 is what's going into the debt service fund.
Those number of pennies go into the debt service fund that's paying our debt service and paying for capital projects, cash funded capital projects. General fund tax rate is the balance of it and it's sitting over here. So currently, we've kind of drawn a bit of a wall between the two and trying to separate what is the tax rate need for debt and capital and what's the tax rate need for operations?
Okay.
We're going to go to Commissioner Griffin, then Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you, David, for your presentation. I'm probably going to need to sit with you. Have last year's presentation and this year's side by side. First thing that jumps up is it's a net $200 million plus in terms of difference, 200 million, okay? When you, when you look at the end amount is 1 billion 900 versus 2 billion 100. And so when I start looking at from year to year, the numbers change. Are the numbers changing because of compound interest, financial assumptions? Are the numbers changing because of projects?
So this is really what's, what's changing from projects. And then the other numbers may have to do with escalation based on timing of projects, right? So if a project slows down, it also gets a little more expensive. But, you know, if you recall from the conversation that you and I had about this model, that there's a lot of sausage making in there that gets to those numbers. So I would, I wouldn't want to try to explain exactly the difference between the model run that you're looking at now from last year to the model run you're looking at now because there's a lot of moving parts that are in there. But, but as it relates to projects, this is really the only thing that's changed from projects.
Before my time runs up, you also mentioned a couple of times about 31, so that's just commentary. That's, we're still at 30, right, Dana?
That's right.
Okay. And the other question I have for you, is there any way that you can tell, not today in front of me, but is there any way, say, year three, in terms of debt service, how much capacity the county will have? Is that, is that model available to suggest to us that at a certain point we'll have less debt service to pay or if you kept it at the same level over a period of time or is that just built into your charts?
So the current plan pretty well maxes out the amount we can borrow by the time we get out there to 2030, right? We are already kind of filling up all of our debt capacity and should not plan to borrow any more money than we currently have planned.
Doesn't debt, debt service decrease at a point or?
Yep.
Remains static?
So our current debt's going down?
Yeah.
And we're borrowing more at the same time. And what we're, our current plan is to borrow more and our debt service is going to increase faster than what we're paying off, which is what these, these charts are, you know, that top left chart is showing you that.
That's remain, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Meyer, then Commissioner Townsend-Aignrum.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It must be really frustrating to talk to people who don't have finance backgrounds. It's like a lot. Okay, so I don't know how to, first I want to talk about land acquisition. I can't remember. On page seven. You are recommending 30 million in '29 and '30, but not '26, '27, '28, but as well it is, is all 30.
30 every year.
Currently approved. But those two years, why did you, why did you jump to recommended?
So the recommendation is that we have $30 million worth of money for land acquisition every year, starting next year through 2030. And we already had some money in the plan in those first three years, so we didn't have to add an entire 30.
Okay. And that recommendation's coming from Park and Rec? No.
I mean, I think when we, when we talked the other day, there is no right answer in terms of how much land we might need to acquire. I think you could get some people that said, "We don't need any" and you could get some that said, "There's never enough." And so what we've tried to get to is...
We've always recommended 30 million.
Okay.
Consistently. You always add more.
Right.
But the recommendation that comes from staff has always been $30 million a year. So that's consistent with our prior year recommendations.
Okay. And I understand that. I know that we have, at least since I've been here, I know we've added. Okay, I got that. Rolling CIP, when do you, when do we start looking at 31?
So 31, we'll talk about next year and we start talking about it with, with all of the folks behind you in September is kind of when we kick this thing off to start looking at how did '25 end, what's everybody seeing for future years? We already know much of what's going to be requested because it's stuff that people might have wanted this year that they didn't ask for that's going to end up on the list in 2031.
And there, you know, we, we hear about all these increases in steel, aluminum, et cetera, et cetera. We really can't predict anything right now.
That's right.
Because it's up and down, up and down, up and down. And I'm just curious, as a non-finance person, how are you allowing for all that fluctuation that you don't even know is going to happen?
Yeah, and I think it's, it's, it would be somewhat short-sighted to try to make some kind of knee-jerk reaction to our long-term plan right now before we know. But I think what I, what I said when we started is this approach to CIP planning gives us time to adjust. So if we learn within the next four or five months that everything that we've got in here for the next year is going to cost, I'm making up a number, you know, 20% more than we thought, then we're going to have to talk about it and reevaluate, you know, what's in the plan and likely make some changes in what we had in plan to do. And that's probably, it would start with the stuff that's underway now and then that would have a ripple effect across the entire plan that we'd have to reevaluate.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Townsend-Aignrum, then Commissioner Powell.
Thank you so much for all of the detailed information and I'm not even sure the questions that I have. I do have lots of questions on this, but I'm not sure that the questions that I have are related to, let me ask it this way. So with the land acquisition, do you determine which parts of the county you want to invest in and the cost of the land and then build your model and estimate how much is going to be needed or is it based on some other assumption? Because the point I'm driving at is if this is a strategic five-year plan, it's going to be some time, if there's a recommendation for, you know, land to be purchased in another county or something of that nature. So what is the process? What is the rationale behind determining where land is purchased?
So the department and works with our team and AFM to sort of, they have priorities for which they're trying to go after. So there is a priority list of types of land that we want to go after, areas that we want to go after. But this number is just a number because we don't know what kind of parcels are going to be available in what areas over the course of the year. So AFM and team are very opportunistic and are always searching for opportunities, but we don't always know where they're going to be.
Okay.
So the number is just based on 30 million a year for land acquisition is a lot of money.
Because the, here's the reason why I'm asking. So, you know, I got this better bus thing and I've got this nice little graphic from Charlotte Department of Transportation about investments, strategic investments in Harrisburg Road East. It's a really nice fold-out thing and it tells where the opportunities are. And I'm like, okay, so does it make sense to purchase, you know, land in a certain area if it's not on a direct line of a bus or a train or something else that will help the priority areas that we're trying to help? So that's what my thought process is of...
So we, we buy land primarily for parks and open space acquisitions, so we're not really looking at land acquisition as it relates to transit or transportation. We do not buy land in other counties, because you had mentioned that and I want to be clear, we don't buy land in other counties. So our strategy is not related to transit plan. That's a whole different conversation.
Right. No, but I, and I understand that, but what I'm saying is if we purchase land for parks and recs and greenways and things of that nature that are needed, because I'm thinking about my area where I live, I'm at large, but I live in District 2. And there's one here, an improvement plan for Rosales Ferry Nature Preserve. And I think about, oh, that would be lovely, but people don't really have a lot of opportunity for transportation, buses to a nature preserve or to the Whitewater Center or to places that are, you know, that folks that we're trying to target. That's my, my thought process.
Okay. We can talk more about that.
Let's go to Commissioner Powell, then we'll go come back to Commissioner Dunlap, Commissioner Griffin, then I think Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell may have had something else. So we'll go with you, Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. And I think maybe we, a couple of us need some one-on-ones or like a team. And I think now's a good time to talk about how, you know, when you're looking at fiscal year 30, will there be any land left to buy? It's good to have the money there, but the, and I love the questions being asked, but we're almost fully built out and so there won't be many parcels left and, which is why it's urgently urgent that we have dollars for land acquisition to protect natural resources in addition to everything else that has, makes it a nice place to live here. And so as I'm looking at this, these land acquisition dollars are for environmental leadership action plan, correct?
Whatever the board tells us it's for.
Well, it's, you know, if you're making a presentation and a recommendation, I'm just trying to understand what is this land acquisition for?
It is for that.
Okay. So these are ELAP dollars for Park and Rec and Natural Resources, stormwater management, that kind of thing, all, everything in environmental leadership and...
Not for stormwater management because they have their own capital dollars for... stormwater, stream restoration, other types of things. So, that is not included here.
Okay. Good. All right, so that helps a little. And my other, I, I really need to talk about this out loud because when you were talking about, they did an analysis to see how much the savings would be on one of these categories. I'm looking at the deep energy retrofit dollars, and I see in, you know, I'm just looking at the different buildings, I've been in all of them, and I'm wondering why we would spend $2 million on AOB on Highway 16 when it was built in the 1950s? Like, why would we add, I would like for you to analyze that more. Like, why would we spend $2 million on a building that might, might need to get knocked down? And then, same for the Aquatic Center, because it, I feel like we just did this recently, like, so, did we do a deep dive on how much this would really save on the deep energy retrofits?
Mark and his team are here, if you want them to respond to you today.
Oh, hello.
So, David kind of mentioned this a little bit, but a lot of the things that you're seeing are replacements of equipment. So, like, it is on AOB, Highway 16, when, I'm sorry. Whenever Highway 16 was first renovated, it's probably been 20, 25 years ago. So, a lot of these are beginning with the replacement of building systems, HVAC equipment, maybe electrical, plumbing, whatever. Usually it's HVAC is the big one. So, as we're doing that, then we look, well, how are we going to do that? Is this a like-for-like replacement? Or is there something I can do to make it more energy efficient? Is there a need for a roof replacement and I can put more insulation in? So, what, what you're seeing in the large costs are usually systems replacements, and there's an incremental cost to make that more energy efficient. And that's where the simple payback and return on investment comes in for that energy efficiency. So, I just want to say, when, point out that when you're seeing these big numbers, it's not all energy efficiency. A lot of that was just replacement of existing systems that it's time to replace. In terms of why we would go ahead and renovate or replace the HVAC system at Highway 16 headquarters, if we tear down and rebuild the building, you're looking at a much larger capital plan, you're looking at putting materials into the landfill, et cetera, et cetera. So, we try to keep buildings and renovate when we can and when it's feasible.
All right. So, hold on, Commissioner Powell, because I know you're going to-
Okay.
Go up, but we're going to do this a particular way. Everyone has follow-ups right now, and I think it's warrant, the follow-ups are warranted. Let me come to Commissioner Dunlap. Let's go to Commissioner Griffin, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, and we'll circle back to you, Commissioner Powell.
All right. My question is pretty much where Laura was headed. With the question about, given today's market, is it wise for us to, to, to do all of what being proposed? And as I understood your answer, it was because we don't know enough about what's happening yet. It makes sense to continue down this road.
Essentially, we don't have any other information that would tell us what we should do. We do have cost escalation built into the plan, so we have already assumed some level of cost escalation for projects. We just don't know what is going to be impacted and by how much.
All right. And then, the, the other question was, for land acquisition, you said the entire 30 million is for environmental impact. What, what, what happens to our other general land requests? Where does the land for CRCs or P, R, I mean, RRCs or, or anything else we want to do? Where, where's that?
That would be in the project directly.
Okay.
We would build that land acquisition cost into the project.
All right.
And then, I think there's a couple of library projects where there might be a specific land acquisition line in the, in the CIP for a specific facility. Those are covered.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Griffin.
David, quick one. You may not be able to answer today, but if you could get back. Just looking at CPC C-line item from last year, this year, FY '25, '26, '27 totals 168-plus million. And looking at the same FY '25, '26, '27 today, I mean, reverse that. Originally, it was 126 million, today it's 168 million, which is a difference of 41 million. And I was just trying to get a sense, is that inflationary compound interest, or just new projects that makes it go up to 41 million? And you may, because you don't have it in front of you, if you'd just get back to me, Dina, or somebody?
Yeah, I mean, I-
What makes that, what makes that difference for me?
I think that's related to the, the Public Safety Training Facility. We had a couple of different projects that got combined into one, but I, we'll look at that and see.
All right. Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll make this really quick. So, on page 10, you have the library project requests, and just really for the public and for my constituents, can you explain or just, you know, help us understand, you know, there's three projects, one's left out. Is that a decision the library makes, the library boards, like, or the, the department in their request? Did they choose that? Or how does that get chosen, which one is left out?
So, these were their three requests in their, in their priority order, and we needed to get, we needed to cut some costs out, so we took the lowest-ranked project and pushed it out a year.
Okay. So, they do the rankings? They're the ones who'd said the, the top?
That's right. And we asked, we asked before we took it off the list, right? Yep.
Okay. Because on other pages, it doesn't look like it's always the top things. It looks like you sometimes skip.
That's right.
Okay. And so, that's just-
But that's, but that's specifically how the, how the library decision was made.
Okay. Thank you.
Got it. Commissioner Townsend-Aignrum.
I just have a request that, you know, and most of my questions have been answered, but going back to the two-cent raise in tax increase in fiscal year '28 and the one-cent in '29, that, that's just scary, thinking about increasing people's taxes over two years. So, if we can get like a model, and I know everything is very volatile right now, but if we can get a model of two different models of what if, based on some of the assumptions that you've already presented, and that may be difficult right now, but in the future, just having, you know, this is what we can fund if we give a one-cent increase, this is what we can't, you know, this is the capacity, or maybe you have that and I just don't see it spelled out exactly the way my brain works.
Well, I think that's- I think that's kind of what Commissioner Dunlap asked. If we took, if we took one, one cent out of the tax increase, what kind of a hole does that leave in the plan? I think was-
Correct.
Was essentially the, the question that Commissioner Dunlap was asking, if that, if you're trying to get at the same thing.
Correct. And actually, just like a visualization.
And just so that we're, we're clear, that would be, that would impact school projects. It wouldn't impact this because those tax increases are for the CMS projects.
Now, the one in '29-
Is that for-
That's for us.
That's for us. So, the two cents is for CMS.
Right.
All right. Let's go-
Are you suggesting that we just do that analysis for our projects or for CMS as well?
Well, the one for CMS, I thought was baked in, the community-
Voted on it.
Bought it. Yeah, they-
They voted on that.
Bought it on the one in '29.
Well, ours are baked in as well because that, those projects were approved based on having that one-cent sales tax in, uh, property tax increase. So, they're all baked in.
Okay. So, they're all approved, but as we're seeing here with the, with the new rolling CIP, some are pushed out, and the reason they're pushed out is because it allows us to fund those at a lower rate, I mean, at a slower pace.
So, the school, the school projects are on track, and that's all funded with bonds, so, so that nothing has changed with, with that funding model. And the two cents in '28 is for the school projects and the school debt. So, so that's tracking the way it needs to. It's, it's the non-school projects and the one cent in 2029. So, so I can run this and take that one cent out in 2029 and, and let you know what that does to the plan.
Right. That, that, that's, that's where we should go with it. I think there would be consensus among the board members that that's the analysis that we would want. So, that's perfect. Let's go to Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I'm going to be stuck in deep energy retrofits for a little while.
Because you got two minutes to be stuck.
Okay. All right. So, we have, like, it's, I mean, that's a lot of money. So, like, we have these buildings on life support, it feels like, like the Howe Marshall Center and AOB, and like, they're on life support. And so, like, really thinking about, should we invest any more into this? I'm really wondering. And then, you know, how much of the cost, like, it, it says for ELAP, how much of the cost is just standard maintenance? Like, you'd have to replace the HVAC anyway. Like, is that really?
It's significant, it's 70 to 80% of the cost of these projects.
So, the reason that I'm asking is, like, standard maintenance is included in the, in this deep energy retrofit, so it kind of gives it a false, false-
It's not standard maintenance, not routine maintenance, it's- Sorry. It's not standard or routine maintenance, it's capital replacements that we would normally have to do through any funding mechanism, but, you know, when, when the systems age out, they do have to be replaced. That can't be done with typical operational maintenance budgets.
I totally understand it. I'm just saying it makes it look like, you know, environmental leadership is getting way more money than it really, than it really is. Because you'd have to do it anyway. And that's a lot of money. So, I just, I just want to-
It's a distinction, I think, that's been made more clear this year that, that helps understand why it's so much, though. Like you said, it's not all just energy.
Yes. Well, well, thank you for that. And I love that you put all, everything at the end, to show us all the projects. Thank you for that. It really is helpful. I'm on stop now.
Thank you. Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. Okay, I just, we, last year, we basically delayed a 14 million. We, we're now in the hole 14 million, correct? And we are now trying to look at our budget and where we can cut to make up for that 14 million.
No.
And that was originally one cent, right? That we-
Half a cent.
Half a cent. Half a cent. Okay. So, that could very possibly happen in, in our next budget cycle, correct? Yes. Okay. Half a cent. Okay. And I'm just saying this for public's sake, that we're looking at that now because we delayed it last year, but nothing until 2028. Is that correct?
For, for capital, that's, that's what's here, correct?
Right. But not, not necessarily talking about our general funds.
Well, we can't predict, well, you can't predict what's going to happen. Again, you know, we don't know, the economy's shaky.
Yeah.
People are talking about a possible recession. We don't know what that'll do to sales tax and other revenues, so I, you can't necessarily rule out a property tax increase in the future, aside from the ones that are baked into this plan. I just think it's, it's too soon to tell.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify all of that. Thank you.
No, thank you. Thank you for that.
Revale comes in.
So, David, two, two things really quickly. Your next steps, if you go to that slide, the first two action items on your next steps was to receive feedback from us today and also to make changes if needed. I don't feel like we've accomplished those two things. We had more questions than we necessarily had feedback. What I'm sensing from the group is that there needs to be more of a deeper dive in, and you guys, you know, correct me if I'm incorrect on this, this is just a sense I get, but with a lot of commissioners, it seems like, in order for you to get the feedback you need, I think they're going to, we're, we're going to need more time. And then, we need more time definitely to recommend changes. So, is that fair?
Yeah.
What you, how you guys are feeling?
Well, well-
Let me, let me, well, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Well, I was going to respond to you.
Yeah, please, go ahead.
Well, I, I think it's fair, there, there seems to be some questions in the air, but I think most of it centers around the question about the one cent in 2020, '29.
Mm-hmm.
Because I, the 2028 tax is baked in. And once he does an analysis, we either approve it or, or not approve it, I, I don't, we don't have a whole lot of choice.
I mean, that, that, that will show you how much the plan is in the hole, and then the decision would be, what do you want to take out to close the hole?
Right.
So, when do you think you could have that analysis done? That's, that's a, that's a fair point. When, when will you have? How long will it take?
That, that'll just take a couple of days to, to run that through the, through the machinery to see what spits out.
So, then if that's the case-
To get that, that hole.
So, if that's the case, then the mechanism to provide that information, you'll just, you'll just send out an email to the board? Is that what you're, is that what you're thinking?
If I can find a way that's going to be understandable in, in a kind of, in a printed material.
Well, that's the point that I'm driving to. If you just send it out that way, it's not going to, there's going to be more questions. So, either way, we're kind of back to a space where we're going to have to, to have, take some time to take a deeper dive with you because it'll generate additional questions, I think. So, what I'm trying to do is, I think there's at least three or four commissioners that need, or that would like to, to get some time and also look at that analysis. Let me go to Arthur, and then I'll come back to you, George.
No, just, just real quickly. Do I understand the, the focus is for David to come back with what happens if you don't do the one cent? I, I mean, because if he does that, then the next question is, what projects will then be deleted? And that's a whole nother conversation.
Well, that's, that's where we have to make a decision, right?
Oh, okay.
So, the analogy, we're asking him to, to give us an analysis around that, right?
I just want to make sure.
About what we would have to do. That, that's exact, that's exactly right.
So, the, if I might suggest another, another thing to consider is, we're, we're, we're going into fiscal '26, and, and we're, we're looking at, what are we planning to do in 2030, and what are we planning to, to add into, to the plan? That tax increase isn't projected until 2029. And as I said before, this, this five-year rolling CIP allows us to, to make changes, and, and we, you, you all could decide that, all right, that's what the plan is right now, and then spend more time in the future looking at it and making changes if you feel necessary. Or it could become very apparent if, when we run the analysis that we, I'm, I'm making numbers up, right, that, that we need to take $20 million out of a project to be added in 2030, and it's obvious that, well, we'll just take one project out of what was approved for '20, so really not changing much from before. So, there is a, a long runway to evaluate what that looks like if, you know, considering where we are today. I mean, it is part of the analysis to, to get to where we are, but I just wanted to highlight for you that, that, that is quite a ways down the road, and there's going to be a lot of things that change between now and, and 2029. Okay. That may have a bigger impact on it. But I think for you to just kind of know, you know, in any given year, if there was, you know, one less cent to, to, to add in, what does that do to, to the plan each year?
All right. I, I think that's, that's helpful. Let me come to Commissioner Dunlap.
Well, I, I think you made it clear that, given the fact that the start time is later, we don't have to know right now. We just need to know before something new is added, because that is really what will impact that particular tax rate. So, that's fair.
So, let, let's end on this. So, one, thank you for the presentation. It's a lot of information. I, I know that there are commissioners that are going to want to circle up with you, so I would just say, commissioners, as needed, circle up. There can be four of us. I know there's at least four around the state, if not more, that definitely want to take there's at least four around the state, if not more, that definitely want to take a deeper dive, continue to give whatever feedback that we need to give, and then be, be ready to come back on April 22nd for whatever that update is, I think is important.
So do you want me to come back on the 22nd with that reduced tax information, just so you have it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you. All right.
I think we have Gabe Mathlis, who is the Chair of the CC-BAC. He's got some words for you this afternoon as well.
All right, welcome, Gabe.
Hi, thank you.
Good afternoon and thank you for having me.
You too.
Just to level set about the history of the CC-BAC, up until, really, about two or three years ago, the CC-BAC had been somewhat defunct. There were a period of years where I think the CC-BAC couldn't even make a quorum in order to hold a meeting, at least for half the meetings of the year. And when I came on to the CC-BAC, it was really a process of trying to understand what our mandate was. And, you know, and, you know, thanks to you, we were able to, we got a better, more understandable charge. And this past year has been the first full CIP fiscal year process that we've been part of, with that, with the benefit of that, the clarity in our mandate. So, over this, I would say that we're in a process of rebuilding and sort of building out systems to sort of carry out your mandate. So I want to sort of make clear that this was the first year that we've been sort of operating under, under the new mandate. So, as part of that, we, we had sort of four categories of items that the B OCC has asked us to report on. One was the overall capital improvement plan process. Second is the underlying agency methodology for developing project funding requests. Third is critical projects included or excluded for funding. And the fourth is the relative allocation of available funding to requesting agencies. Within our report, we really had two primary recommendations. One is that, just given that we are community volunteers without in-depth knowledge of each agency's operations, priorities, and goals, to, for each agency to include within its capital funding request more information about the, how that capital project aligns with their master plan. Because, because we don't know. All we can do is, is sort of evaluate that information based on what's provided to us in the forms, and then in back and forth conversation during the, the, each agency's presentation to us. And then second is, and this came up in each one of the agency presentations, is for the agencies to sort of better provide us information regarding the, the value proposition of that particular project to the community in light of the financial cost. Now, some of that, I imagine, is embedded within the each agency's master plan, but it isn't clear to us, you know, in evaluating the projects, necessarily what, what that value proposition is. And so, that's something that I think that's critical for us as, as, you know, community members and members of the CC-BAC to understand in, in evaluating the projects and the underlying methodology for each agency's submissions. Beyond that, I just want to say that we're supportive of the five-year rolling CIP process. I think it's a lot cleaner and provides a lot more cushion to make amendments or, or changes as needed over, over time. And I just also want to appreciate, want to say I really appreciate how much information and cooperation we've gotten from David and his team as to, in terms of getting us information and, and working with them. Didn't, don't have a fancy slide deck, but I just wanted to make those remarks, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Yeah, thank you for that. So, why don't we do this? Because I know there'll be some comments. So I'm gonna start to my right and work back to the left. So we'll start with you, Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, at this point, I think I just want to say thank you for the work that you guys are doing. And I know that it was a little rocky getting started, and it looks like you guys are, are making progress. And we really appreciate the deep dive that you guys are, are doing and, and the recommendations that you've made. And, and so, yeah, that's, I don't really have any questions at this point until I have a little more time to read through. So, I just appreciate the service that you guys are providing to us. And please reach out anytime.
Thank you.
Commissioner Meyer.
Thank you. I also don't have questions, but I do want to say how important that you, you exist, that this committee exists. So, thank you for your work. I really think this is part of democracy, that we have citizens who are, are watching us. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I really admire how you, you didn't just say, oh, I did not know what I was getting into. And that you stayed the course. And I want to know, what, what do you want us to know? What do you want us to know about the process? Like, are you, do you feel like it's thorough enough? Do you think it needs to be more?
I think the process itself works and is well-designed. From a, but again, from a community member's standpoint, it's, when we're evaluating the projects and the process and how each project was selected, we, it's, it's difficult, like, we, there's a lot of deference to the, each individual agency because we're not in the trenches with them. We're just sort of evaluating it at a high level. And so, being able to tie their projects back to their own master plan, and so, so we can better understand their priorities and why they chose those individual projects vis-à-vis, you know, something else, I, I think would be really helpful. And, and that's what I would encourage sort of the board to ask of the agencies moving forward, is just to tie those project submissions back to the master plans, which they've, they've clearly spent a lot of time and thought preparing, just so we, you know, and frankly, the board as well, can better understand sort of what the justification is for those projects and the underlying priorities and value proposition for the community.
Thank you. And keep asking for that, like, and, and, and will help. But just keep asking for what the citizen body needs to know to make sure that you're making the best recommendations to us. Because there was a time, and hopefully it's coming again, where this was one of the most important advisory committees in the county. And so, you know, just reach out anytime if I can help or any of us. I appreciate you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Dunlap.
Well, thank you. I too want to commend you for your efforts in terms of getting this committee reestablished. And I support your recommendation wholeheartedly. One of the things that, that you begin to learn as you go throughout the county and you observe, I know on, was it Friday night? When were we at the Howe Marshall Center?
The Hall Marshall Center.
Okay, well, whatever night. We learned that the ceiling in Howe Marshall Center has ten-inch cement ceiling, ten inches of cement. The walls sixteen inches thick of brick. That is probably the safest building in all of Mecklenburg County. And I bring that up to make sure that we don't ever talk about tearing it down.
It's our shelter.
Right.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin.
Well, let me just remind my colleague, Mr. Dunlap. As a child, I used to go up there because that was Sears and Roebuck's.
Wow.
All right.
Both went to get our britches.
Your britches.
I want to thank you for, for your, your service in terms of CC-BAC. And as Commissioner Powell said, it used to be the most powerful, as she says, District Two, but most powerful advisory committee. Because I can remember having to go before that to give you value propositions about why the schools needed two hundred million dollars or whatever it was, and then had to come before the county commission to give them another presentation on value proposition about the schools. So, we, we've removed that headache from you. But I think the, the, the way you frame your position and what you'd want to do is make sure that what you're doing and your committee's doing is beneficial for the entire committee. And what you've laid out certainly is appropriate, in my opinion, is to get that sense. Because you represent us, but you also represent the entire community in making sure that there's value in what we do as it relates to capital expenditures. So, thank you again for your recommendations. I certainly support it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Townsend-Agraw.
Thank you also. And yeah, I know how difficult it is to, to rejuvenate, reactivate something like this. So, this is excellent. And I think you summed up, all of my questions pretty much here today boil down to your summary there on page three of evaluation and recommendation, that value added. And I'll just say, just thinking about the process and the future, having representation of different organizations, different individuals from different backgrounds within the county is going to be critical. So I'm hoping that maybe there would be some kind of tool to evaluate the commu, and, and maybe that's just our job. But something that's geared towards capital improvement and questions that you would ask the community. But this is excellent. You boiled it down really quick, you know, plainly to what the questions that I have. So thank you so much.
Thank you. And as it relates to committee constitution, I, I believe that there's a intent, or there was, I'd have to go back and look at the updated charter, but to grab people from different parts of the community and from different walks of life, but still everybody having a background in sort of capital projects that may come up. So I think that is part of the intent behind the composition of, of the current committee. And I will say that I think we had one or two members sort of fall off. And so, we could use a few more.
Gotcha.
Well, that's helpful to know. I just want to echo my colleague's comments. Thank you for your work. Thank you for hanging in there and, and for being the, the engine that started this thing. And we really appreciate it. You definitely provide a tremendous amount of value. And I hope you feel the support of this board, and, and we'll certainly work to get, get you some more help. Because you've got, what, you said, three openings?
At least two, maybe three or four.
Okay. So Madam Clerk, why don't we take a look at that and figure out how we can get those filled? Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anything else that we should know while you've got the mic?
No.
No.
I, I appreciate your time and all the support for the CC-BAC.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
All right. Well, that was kind of a good way to close the show. But we've got one more item on the agenda, and that's going to be commissioner reports. And I will start to my left this time with Commissioner Townsend-Agraw.
I have no report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Griffin.
No report.
Commissioner Dunlap.
Well, as I was talking earlier, we visited the VAPA Center. And I hope everybody will take the opportunity to go and visit since the renovations have been done and the county did those renovations. And I'm glad they did. The one thing that's missing is that they did not have the funds to do the bathrooms. And I just think for such a beautiful building, and then to go into the restrooms, it's just a little distasteful. So hopefully, we can come up with a few dollars out of our fund balance to, to do the restrooms.
All right. Commissioner Powell.
Thank you. I look forward to next week, hearing from Medic. Is number one priority in District One.
Yeah.
Number one priority in District One. And my hearing is also a priority in southern towns, but I represent the northern towns, so I am thankful that they're coming. That's it.
All right. Commissioner Meyer, thank you.
Glad they're coming, too.
Thank you. I was also gonna bring up the VAPA Center. I really, I'm so impressed with the county and the money that went to renovating and, and housing all these artists. And these are small artists who didn't have a home, and we are supporting them. And I think that's pretty impressive. So, thank you to the, to this board and to the county. And it's just, it's wonderful. Also, Thursday morning, Commissioners Dunlap, myself, Rodriguez-McDowell, and Altman participated in coffee with commissioners. It was the first of its kind. There are two more. It was so much fun, and it was so packed. I was exhausted afterwards. And I really appreciate public information, getting that off the ground. Fantastic job, very well organized. I think we probably overwhelmed Amelie's, but it was wonderful. People had a lot to say. They do want to talk to you. And so, I hope you look forward to yours coming up because they have a lot to say. Thank you.
That's great.
Let me go to Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell, then we'll come back to you. Commissioner Rodriguez-McDowell.
Okay. Yeah, well, both, you know, George and Laura both referred to the VAPA Center. It was really, really great. And we got to have a tour of actual artists, took, a couple of artists took us around to show us, and we met some other artists. And the art out there is really outstanding, and the opportunity that those artists have. So I hope that that's gonna continue. I know they have three more years on their lease, and I'm just hoping to keep going. But I also just wanted to mention that tomorrow I will be at the Community Huddles Addressing Targeted Solutions with CNPD in the South Division. And I'm looking forward to that. I know Commissioner Powell went to the North Division. And so, looking forward to seeing what that's gonna be all about. And, yeah, so, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, I also enjoyed the time at Amelie's and meeting people. It really was a good time. I hope we'll do more of those, maybe one in District Six.
Thank you. Commissioner Griffin.
Yeah, I just forgot, George and Laura and Susan reminded me. I'm gonna do a coffee with commissioners at the Eastway Regional Recreation Center this coming Thursday morning at nine thirty. So please show up.
Right. Commissioner Townsend-Agraw.
I'm sorry, I forgot to, but when you were talking about the artistic event that you went to, I also went to one, and there was two on the same day, because you sent that one to me. And this one was off of Wilkinson Boulevard, and it's for the West Side. That's why I'm like, yay, it was something for the West Side. But it was Tommy Nichols in connection with Harding University High School. He's included them, as well as Johnson C. Smith University and some funding they got. But that facility, pictures don't do it justice. A church has, you know, donated like the backside of a building that wasn't being used, and they have turned it into a podcast center, radio station, gaming center, you got AI, all of these things that they're offering. And it's right across the street from Harding University High School. And I was so excited. It's so beautiful, the inside. And they have this beautiful baby grand piano with green around it. It's awesome. So, I think the public opening is coming up, too. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I want to say thank you to commissioners that graced us with your presence in District Four. We really appreciate it. Coming to the VAPA Center. But I do not have any report, and at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Ayes have it. Meeting adjourned.
Mr. Griffin?
Thank you.
Please give my regrets.